Give you the page numbers for these items. City Council, page ten. Administration, page twelve. City Clerk, page eleven. Excuse me. Legal, page seventeen. Natural Resources, page twenty-six. Finance, page thirteen. Personnel, fourteen. Information Technology, fifteen. Purchasing, sixteen. Non-departmental, twenty-seven. Debt Service, fifty-six. Fiduciary Funds, forty-seven and forty-eight. And if I mispronounce that, remember, I'm from Texas, so we get to mispronounce stuff.
Yeah.
Planning and zoning, nineteen. CIP Fund, fifty and six, fifty and fifty-one. And the Cottonwood Area Transit and Birding Link Systems, forty and forty-one. All right, page one through page five are basically summaries of the different departments. Basically, we just combined the revenues and expenditures, revenues, and then broke out the departments that are underneath that fund, and that's basically all we did. As you can see on the final page, it shows at the very bottom of page five, it shows the balances that they go ahead and balance out, the revenues and the expenditures, at eighty-four million, nine hundred and ninety-five thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars.
To the bottom of page five?
Page five, right.
I see.
That's the end of the summaries. And then we go on into our general fund revenues. And on the far right side, there's a percentage change. Just kind of a caveat. Don't get stuck in the percentage change. We have, we have, sometimes we get to a point where we spent fifty dollars now, and because we weren't having any activity, and then next year we spend five thousand dollars, and we have this huge percentage increase. So if you see, that's, that's more or less for a guide. If you see something that big, a big percentage increase, make sure you look at the numbers, because usually from a small to large number, obviously you have a very large increase. But it's more along the difference between the next, the third to the last line and the second to the last line is what we're concerned with. Those are the numbers we plan to finish up with here, are the department head numbers, and then the budget requests is what we're planning to spend next year. And with that being said, we'll turn to page ten. As you can see, that, that big number there, nineteen, nineteen-hundred-and-thirty-seven percent increase. Okay. This is, this is a point that, that Councilmember Tosco mentioned earlier. Why does it such a big jump? This is where we go ahead, and as you can see, just, just real briefly down towards the bottom, right-hand side, you can see where our reserves are set aside. That's why we have such a big jump. And then we also have a big drop when we have our audit, or when we do our budgetary revisions, because basically, we're budgeting all of our reserves that we have are right there. And that's what, what makes that big spike right, right between what we plan to do this year and what we, what we would like to do next year. That's just, we budget all of our reserves into an expenditure, not that we're going to use it, but we have the budget authority in case there is a catastrophic event. Actually, it'd be good to go ahead and go down the line. If anyone just, just proves down the line and see if there's anything that's, that's outstanding, because I'll do the same and point anything out that I feel that is sticking out there. For the most part, most of the numbers are very close to what we did last year, with exception of the reserves that we have. We didn't budget them for, for, we no longer going to budget them this year, because we don't expect there to be a catastrophic failure. We went ahead and used those reserves to begin the next, following, the next year. Just so you know, that until such time as this budget is actually adopted, the, the original budget, being the one that says budget year, the fifth one from the right, those numbers are still there, and those still, in a sense, are still active until such time as council adopts it. When you adopt it, those numbers drop off on the column of the third from the right, and they're rebudgeted for reserves for the following year. Did I kind of make that as confusing as I could?
Yeah, repeat that, please.
Okay. The budget year, one, two, three, four, five, five lines in, that's where we're, that's our budget currently as it sits. The third one from the right, the two-hundred-and-ten, zero, one, zero, is what we plan to finish out the year. The four-point-one million that I mentioned previously, we're still active until such time as council approves the budget. Now, we go back to our department head and tell them, don't spend any more than you planned to spend, or the numbers you gave us. But in reality, if there were catastrophic failure, the budget that we currently have, the four-point-one million, would still be active until such time as we adopt this budget. Now, the two-hundred-and-ten-thousand-dollar budget line, the third one from the right, that one does not have the reserves. Those reserves will be put into the following year. Those are traditionally, are, those traditionally, traditionally-
You're from Texas.
-are not meant to be used unless there's an emergency, or council comes back to us and says, take for example, the senior center a few years ago, that they asked for two or three-hundred thousand dollars to complete their project, their building. That's where you can go ahead and get it from, if something, something like that happens. But traditionally, we don't touch those numbers. Outside of that, there's not, there's no really any substantial changes to the budget itself for the council. Now, if you want to go ahead and tell you, if, if you go back and go home tonight and start going through the budget, and start finding things that, that we might have overlooked, we'll be happy to go ahead and come back in and discuss them tomorrow, and Thursday, and Friday if necessary. Or an email, if you have a question, you can email to me, and I can have an answer for you when we meet the next time. We don't want to leave any, any questions or concerns out there for the council. We want you to be comfortable with, with what you'll be adopting this coming year.
What is under subscriptions and memberships for the council?
The big one for that one, I think, is the league, is that correct?
Yes, the, the league fees that they charge per capita, NACOG per capita, any type of, like, newspaper, those types of things.
Okay.
Does that include the league conference?
No, no.
Is that out of travel and training?
That's out of travel, training, yes.
That's right, that's right.
It looks like the Birding Festival gets a thousand from the council, they get a thousand from-
From water.
From water as well, okay.
Correct. I think, I think, I may, I may have kind of glossed over it. It was on the, on the PowerPoint, I didn't point it out. I know, I put it in there, but, yes, you're right, on both.
Then the telephone, is that just the telephone over there in the office, across the street?
Yes.
Just that one phone, costs seventeen-fifty?
Well, the maintenance, that includes the maintenance on, on the phone system, so it's all prorated based on the number of phones that are out there. Now, if you have a cellular phone, anyone who has a cellular phone also gets, gets charged up to that. Right.
Crazy. But is that its own line over there? That one that goes into the council's office, mayor's office over there, is that its own line?
There, well, yeah, it's, 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 we're all tied together by, I'm not sure if we're using tablets anymore or not, but we're all, we're all on one system. We divide it up by, in some cases, we use square footage, in some cases, we use computers, in some cases, we use, in this case, it's by the phone that you have available over there.
All right.
All right, we don't have any questions, we'll move on to page twelve. All right, on page twelve, we have administration's budget. Their overall increase from, from the current fiscal year to next year, excuse me, is two-point-six-three percent. I think some of the largest increases we have is in the health insurance line, just the increase, and a lot of times, there'll be changes in the, the plan, especially when you have change employees. To note, the city manager's contingency went from twenty-five-hundred, eighty-five-hundred to zero this upcoming year. Any questions, we'll move on to the city clerk, that's page eleven. Again, these are the smaller departments, so they go relatively quick. City Clerk's increase is six-point-three-two percent. Probably the largest expense that's showing here happens to be the, the election amount. We planned for fifteen thousand, we're actually going to, we were expecting to come in about twenty-one thousand. Next year, we're looking at twenty-eight thousand dollars for election expense. Unfortunately, those kind of things, there's not much we can do about them. When they come through, we have to pay them.
Now, is that because we're working with the county on the-
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it, it increased our cost to go all-mail ballot. They, they charge us for each ballot that gets mailed out, and then for the ballots that are returned for checking them, the signatures. So our, our election expenses have increased quite a bit, last year, with this last election, and the year previous. So I expect them to run fourteen thousand each for our next election, next year.
Moving on to legal, that'll be page seventeen. We're looking at one-point-two percent increase.
So under contractual services, is that every time we need to go out for an outside council that we, that would come out of that contractual services?
Mr. Mayor and Council, yes. As the council knows, this is, the model we have is, is me, in-house, and then sort of PRN, as-needed specialists, and a contract prosecutor. And I'll, I'll note for the council that this year, from past outside council expenses, we recouped about, doesn't show up in the budget here. We, we recouped about eighty thousand dollars in settlements, you know, and, and actually charging back to a developer on a major development, the outside council fees. So that's, we use that budget authority, I try to use that as sparingly as possible. Some years, I spend a lot of that, and, and years like this, we spend it, and it looks like, I'm happy to report, that will be in budget. And then, we, we are occasionally able to recover, either because we're involved in cases where we get our attorney's fees in settlement, or things like big developments, where we get the money back.
So if there's another department that's requesting, that we need to hire outside council for, it still comes out of your budget, but it's charged to that department? How does that work?
If it's outside funds, outside of general fund, they, we charge, we charge it back to them, such as the water fund. If there's issues, because they have the resources, then that's their cost, we put it over there. But these are traditionally general fund, or general fund-funded activities.
Mm-hmm, okay. All right. Any other questions from council?
All right, our next one is our natural resources, that's on page twenty-six. We're looking at an increase of about four, four-point-eight percent. Not really anything extraordinary out there. That, that budget is relatively, relatively small as it is. Next one is finance budget, page thirteen. We're expecting to be one-point-three percent above what we planned to do this year. It's right in line with what we budgeted last year. There's really nothing in there. Reduced our contractual services. Outside of that, everything seems to be pretty much in line.
What would be an expense under, under computer support?
Yeah, that's, that's in, that's in all of our budgets, and that's all allocated by the number of computers that you have, allocated to your department.
Okay. So software and all the licensing that you have to purchase, too?
Yeah. Yeah.
All right.
Next one is personnel, that's page fourteen. That was looking at a ten percent drop. And that, the, the sharp drop happens to be because of the new HR manager that we have. Her salary will be a little bit less than our new, than our outgoing HR manager. Want to put, want to do point out that the unemployment insurance is, is up, is up a bit. We don't allocate the, the unemployment insurance to other departments, because we don't pay a fee into the, into their pool. We actually pay on a per-case basis. If we do lose a case, then we go ahead and pay for it. Outside of that, we don't pay into a program. So it's all budget, it's all budgeted in here. That includes everybody's unemployment.
I see our recruitment expenses jumping up a bit, is that in an effort to fill some of those positions?
That's, that's, that's part of it. It just keeps getting more and more expensive to, to recruit people. In many cases, we, we end up recruiting not necessarily just here locally, we end up recruiting, you know, area-wide, region, nation, statewide, in some cases, nationwide. But traditionally, most of our, most of our area is just this area. I mean, the, the, the lower the department, or the lower the, the position, it's easier to recruit close by. When you start getting up, the higher up you go, the wider the net we have to spread.
We think some of that probably has to do with the police and public safety, too, it's hard to, so recruitment's harder?
It, it's, it becomes more and more difficult.
Right.
It, it's just, that's just kind of the nature of the beast. Like I said, even the, the retirement plan now will make it even more difficult. The, the Black Lives Matter, and the controversy over that, and Blue Lives Matter, doesn't make things any easier for them.
Right.
I think, you know, as I've mentioned before, it, they've kind of gotten a bum rap. We've got a good group, and unfortunately, they paint everyone the same blush.
Rudy, I'm not familiar with the, I guess, Safety Personnel Committee. Can you explain this item, please?
I'll, I'll try to. We have, we, every year, we try, we do, we give out every quarter, we go out and give a token to people that are safety-conscious. We ask for applications, they submit applications to HR, they get together with a group, and that group goes ahead and reviews each of those submissions. And that's not the safety one, that's the, the employee one. They review them, and then they vote on who should get the employee a quarter, and we go ahead and make a presentation, and give them a small token. The other one is the, the safety one, that one. We, we submit it also, and it's, I think it's drawn out of a hat, isn't it, or something like that? Because most of those things, you know, a buckled software that could, a sidewalk that could cause us problems, a pothole that could cause some damage, stop signs that constantly get stolen from our post. Employees report those, and we get, we, we compile them, and then once, every quarter, we go ahead and basically put them in a bucket, and pull out one, and say, hey, cool, thank you, and we go ahead and reward them. We try to encourage people to be efficient, we try and encourage people to be safety-conscious.
Mayor, Council, they also review any traffic accidents that employees have, and make recommendations on discipline or training, and those kind of things. And they also review safety issues around the city. So that if, you know, there's issues that need to be corrected, they look at those and determine whether or not those need to be corrected, and how.
Thank you.
Moving on to information, that'll be page fifteen. They have a spike of thirty-two percent, and the spike is coming from having been two employees short most of last year, almost all of last year. This is a four, four IT computer person, and then we have a GIS person on there, and we have a radio technician. So it's six persons, and last year, we brought on the radio technician late in the year, we brought our, for this year, we brought him-
October.
October. So it was not right off at the beginning of the year, later on in the, in last calendar year. And we were short our IT Tech One and IT Tech Two. So we had some savings, which of course, now we've got a full staff finally, which we're really pleased with, and that's where our big spike is. And of course, then along with the salaries, come the, all the other benefits that also have a bit of a spike.
Another bigger spike actually comes from us taking over a few things from the-
Mr. Carter, if you could, you have to step up to the microphone.
Sorry, Mayor and Council. One of the bigger spikes comes from the Police Department Technology Systems. We're actually taking those over coming this, this fiscal year.
Okay.
So they're just switching basically one department to another.
Okay, great.
No, that is contractual services. That's, that's some mapping, correct?
Yeah, the spillman actually coming from the Police Department is the biggest item.
Yeah, there's a spike on, on their, on their contractual services. Go from twenty-four thousand to seventy-eight thousand, or seventy-nine thousand dollars, and that was... Okay.
The biggest spill.
Okay, yeah, it's, it's the spillman system is now their responsibility.
It's our public safety software system that they use for dispatching as well as any police functions.
Okay.
Since we support it, we've switched it to our department.
I have a question, I just didn't see it on anything else. Clothing? I haven't seen that on any other budget, so I'm curious.
We don't, we don't normally budget clothing in other ones. PD gets clothing.
Right.
Fire gets clothing, Public Works does. IT has recently been starting to, to wear shirts, because they're working more and more out in the public. Those of us that work in our offices, occasionally will get a shirt that we might wear to conference or anything, but they wear shirts on a regular basis. The Public Works people, they wear T-shirts out in the sun and stuff, we give them jackets during winter, we provide them with steel-toed boots. So some departments have clothing allowance, some people, some departments don't.
Thank you. It was just the first time I had seen it, I figured it was because you guys were going out and about the city, but, thank you.
There's also a spike in your, in your furnishings and equipment. That's, okay, those are the service, for the spillman?
Yes, the spillman's server going-
Yeah, I apologize.
The same spillman server is going end-of-life, we're forced to replace it. It's also a new technology, for a new platform.
Moving on, purchasing is on page, on page sixteen. That one has about a four percent increase. There's really nothing extraordinary there. The big one there, of course, is just, is, 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 is salary, and the Bennys that go along with it. Total increase is about thirty-nine hundred bucks, roughly. Again, I'll remind you, if you have any questions, once we, later on today, or tomorrow, just send them over, and we'll be happy to go ahead and answer them and get it back to you. We'll move on to debt service, that's on page fifty-six.
Missed one.
Who'd I miss? Oh, I scratched, I was trying to do it on purpose, actually. Page twenty-seven, thank you for catching that. Our non-departmental is basically that, something that doesn't fit into all departments, or is, is pretty general to, to all the departments. As you can see, auction fees, that's basically, we, we auction through public surplus, and, and we go ahead and cover those costs. Traditionally, that, those costs are passed on, so it's kind of a pass-through, we pass those costs on to whoever purchases- Traditionally, that, those costs are passed on, so it's kind of a pass-through. We pass those costs on to whoever purchases. They get it in, however, we do have to have expenditure because we do cut a check back to public service. The Chamber of Commerce, as I mentioned earlier, that's the three percent bed tax that's collected. It goes directly through them to be split between them and the Economic Development Council. Outside of that, liability insurance is in here. Our lease purchase equipment, that belongs to the general funds or non-enterprise funds, is in here also. The enterprise funds pay for their own lease purchases as well as their own debt service. The big jump you might see in there is a hundred and sixty-four, a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars at the very bottom of the page. That is the last lease we did last year. It'll be, it shows up as our first payment this upcoming year, about a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. Moving on to now, the debt service. That's on page fifty-six. And the debt service we have there is reserves that we had, and also the Goda loan that we had. You can see, as you can see, there's thirteen million dollars on the expense line. That thirteen million dollars happens to be the refinancing of the Goda loan. As you may recall, we got the loan itself, but it was not ready to be called. It should be called this coming year. And that's where we'll make the expense to go ahead and put it into an escrow account, go ahead and pay for the Goda loan.
I'm sorry, I don't see that, the thirteen million?
Thirteen, it, it's on the expenditure section. The top section is the revenues. The bottom section is the expenditures. It, right underneath the nine hundred and forty-eight thousand is thirteen million eight hundred and seventy-four thousand.
I see it, thank you.
Right. Also included in this is the, the, the two thousand and seventeen pledge revenues that we did, that we actually got done. Those were for the Twelfth Street Project, Dominguez Reconstruction from Willard all the way down to Main. Three rest, two restrooms, there were new restrooms at the Kids Park and also at Garrison Street, Garrison Park. And then, of course, renovation over at the, the Riverfront Park. Oh, excuse me, that, oh, I've got the wrong. Oh, okay, the refinancing is the, is the, is the actual, I believe it's the, the debt service, I apologize. That's the debts, the upper one, the nine eighty and the three hundred and ninety-seven, that's the, the debt service on the Goda. And the one down here is the, the one thirty-one, one one thirty-four is the, the, the principal interest on the, the one I just mentioned.
Okay.
Including the Main Street. Thank you. All right, moving on is the twelve fiduciary funds, and that's on page forty-seven. And that covers two different pages. We have the Volunteer Fireman's Pension and also the Employee Benefit Trust. The Volunteer Fireman's Pension also actually called the alternate, alternate pension for firefighters is, is, is not being used at all at this point in time. It was once set up to provide some sort of an income or retire, end retirement for volunteers. Got to the point where we couldn't keep volunteers very long. They, nowadays, volunteers aren't what they used to be. Volunteers were people that were, worked for the grocery store, the gas station, an office, and they could come over and hang out, and if fire came up, they were always able to help. Now, our volunteers have to be fully certified, just like a regular firefighter. So consequently, they come to work for us so they can get some experience so that they can go work for a fire department somewhere else. So we've become a training ground. So we decided to not go ahead and compensate them, not provide them a retirement plan, let's put it that way. We still give them a stipend for coming in and helping out, but for the most part, they hang around for a while, for, you know, a month or two, and then they leave. And what was happening was, we'd be contributing money to their retire, to this little retirement plan they have, and then two months later, they'd take it out. So they were just kind of a little slush fund for them. Now, we basically give them a stipend and they help out, and when they leave, well, they leave. We've, we've been trying, my fault, we haven't gotten this particular fund to go away. Where this has been approved by Council to go ahead and disband it?
Dissolve the.
Dissolve, dissolve the, this particular, or pool, but we haven't, I have, we did not found time to go ahead and do it. It's not hurting anything, but we want to go ahead and dissolve it because we have to meet at least once a year to have a meeting and talk about the invest, real briefly, the investments and, and who has been paid out, who's contributed, and it gets to be an hour-long meeting that we could probably do without because there's no real activity or need for it. So we'll eventually go ahead and do away with this particular.
But Mayor and Council, and the reason is it, because it's a pension, it's hyper-technical to, to walk away from. There's things, there's very intricate process we need to go through, and then certain things, you know, certain things we can only do with, with the funds. So we just need to work through those steps.
Look forward to dissolving that.
This year was your first meeting, am I correct?
Yeah.
This long.
First and last meeting, right?
We're gonna, we're gonna do our best. The other, the other one we have is Employee Benefit Trust Fund. This one was a, a employee benefit. It was self-funding for our health insurance years and years ago. I think in two thousand and one was when we finally got Verde Valley, at that time, Verde Valley Schools Pool to take us in, and we haven't looked back since. But we have kept, kept this, this fund open because we can't do anything except provide some sort of benefits to employees that are above and beyond what we normally would provide. Take, for example, we had some, at one point, we had nearly three hundred thousand dollars in this particular fund. Thank you very much. And what ended up, what we've done in the past, we didn't have short-term disability, and we funded short-term disability out of this fund for our employees. And that's how we got it down quite a ways. We're still sitting on, on a little bit of money. We're not using it for, for any purpose. Eventually, when it gets exhausted, we will probably do away with this particular fund also. We'll move on to planning and zoning. That's on page nineteen. And I apologize that we jumped from one section to another. What we try to do is group like public safety in one area and public works in another area. So that way, we only have them here for a day rather than every single day. And just so you know, we, we asked apartment heads if they wanted to join us and, and, you know, it's been years since they actually went and did your golden accomplishments and everything else. And the reason we kind of got away from that was because there wasn't really much to talk about. Most of these budgets are pretty tight and they're, they're not getting very much. And there's not much money to add more stuff or to bring to Council and request more stuff. We will have, PD will be here, I believe it's tomorrow. And we, and we'll have a couple of others. The court wants to be in here and, so, but, you know, if those who sit there and go like, well, what am I going to say? I go ahead and handle it for them, and, because there's not much to those departments, and especially in these are relatively small. Planning and zoning, also called community development, they have a bit of a, of a spike. And that one. I'm looking at it right here, and actually, it seems like a bit of a spike from, in salaries, but in reality, if you look at the budget year from last year, it's actually, I believe the staffing is, is, they've got full staffing now over there. So that brings them up to where they, they need to be on their staffing. The rest of it is increases in the benefits that go along with it. That's really, that's really about what they've got, is full staffing is causing them to have a spike. Okay, moving on to CIP Fund.
Can we just back up just for a second? I know we're full staffing, but we're still short of building official. Well, I know Baron Najad is now kind of filling in as building official, but I'm just curious if there's maybe some opportunity to work with Clarkdale, maybe in the county too, on inspections and stuff. Do we currently do that?
Mayor, Council members, I'm, I'm gonna make that a task for me to pursue, see if we can somehow share. But in the interim, what we do is, we do have a contract with a company that'll come in and send in a building official when we need it, so.
Okay.
We'll move on to CIP Funds, page fifty and fifty-one. On here, we have the Civic Center HVAC project. We're so working, looking.
Thank you.
We still look, moving forward with, with trying to get that done. As you, as you might have seen, the Civic Center has all the windows boarded up. No, we haven't mouthballed it. We're, we're just mitigating asbestos in, in the building. That building is, is sure to be a real, really upgrade, really, this should have a really good, nice upgrade once it's completely done. Outside of that, the, we have a transfer out, and that was to, to Waits Water, for the continuation of the, the Riverfront Facility.
Question on the Civic Center, if, if there's a situation where that CDBG money that came through from the county, two hundred and sixty-five thousand, if that money falls through, what's the backup on that?
We, we're, we're probably coming back to visit you.
Okay.
And go through our budgets and try to figure out what, what the plan of action will be.
Okay.
At this point in time, we, we're, we're, we're holding our fingers crossed. We still have the budget authority to move our money around if we need to. But we'll probably have to come back to Council and see if we could, need to change the scope of work, or if we could find some other way to go ahead and finish that project.
So it's not budgeted currently, that two hundred and sixty-five's not in the budget anywhere?
Yeah.
It is, okay. But if it falls through, then of course, we have to shuffle money or?
We'll have to, yeah, we'll have to shuffle, you know, shift a few things around, try to figure out how we're gonna compensate. Let me see, and we'll move on to the last one today. We won't keep you too late today. Cottonwood Area Transit and the Verde Lakes Bus System. That's on page forty and forty-one. This, this is, this is probably one of the longest budgets out there and probably, rightfully so. We have to keep the operations and the administrative portions separate for accounting purposes as well as, as being able to draw on the grant itself. This particular one is, and it makes it a little bit more complicated because it goes by the federal fiscal year, starting, that would be October first, October first through September thirtieth, and of course, our budget year is July first through June. So we have some overlap on it, and not to mention, the City Cottonwood, at the end of the year, projects that are not completed, they either, we have to re-budget them, okay, and, and any money that hasn't been spent, let's say, on office supplies, it lapses. The federal, the federal government, unfortunately, they seem to kind of roll over projects year after year for three to five years after they should have been completed. And it has, that, that has played real well for us because we are currently in the process of redoing the side sidewalks on Cottonwood Street over by Safeway. We got our bids in, we're looking them over, and our engineers looking at them because we're gonna take out the bus stops that are on both sides of that street, put in sidewalks that are handicap accessible, and then put those, those right back.
You mean bid.
Bid.
We got, well, you said bids. We got three. One was, one was late and one was non-compliant, so we got one bid.
Okay, bid. And, and anyways, we're, we're gonna have those things, be handicap accessible and, and compliant, and we'll have sidewalk spots on both sides of that particular street, which is welcome to that neighborhood too. Outside of that, the budget itself is nothing extraordinary, no really big items. They do not have any capital on there. What's that? Oh, besides, besides the, the bus stops. This year, we gave up, we, we had budgeted for two MV ones. Those kind of peculiar-looking vehicles that are handicap, purpose-built for, for handicap accessibility. We budgeted two of them. That was because we were going, we were expecting to have to do paratransit over at Sedona. We were able to defend it. I shouldn't say we, Bruce was able to defend it, and we didn't have to do paratransit in Sedona. So consequently, we saved them a boatload of money. Unfortunately, we had to give the money back for the buses. So, but that was good too, because it saved some money on, on, on both, both us and Sedona. We still have, we have two buses that are gonna be leaving us. We may recall, we had three buses that we had surplus. Two of them are going to another community. We had, we had originally assigned all three. Yeah, we had originally assigned them to go to the Navajo Nation. After a lot of work and estimates and stuff that we had to go through, they decided they weren't gonna come pick them up. So we asked ADOT what we should do with them, and they said, I have a community that needs two of them, so two of them are going to someone. I apologize. Write that down and I'll, and I'll get back to you. But two of them are going, the other one is still sitting, will be sitting here for a little while. We're trying to decide whether we, we ought to auction it off or if we can find someone else to use it. And the reason we can't auction at least two of those off is because there are our money, those American.
Recovery and Reinvestment Act.
There you go. Yeah, they were bought through NATA using the our monies. And, and unfortunately, they say, as long as they're repurposed, repurposable, they will be repurposed to another facility. And they're in great shape, but they have high mileage, and we already have the buses.
Okay. Now that Yalpe County and Clarkdale up on the upper lines there, is that their, is that the only amount that they give us yearly for this transit?
Yes.
Program, okay.
And that's where most of our money, ADOT, Yalpe County, Clarkdale, Fair Boxes, that's where most of it does come into play. Oh, and Sedona, they, Sedona pays for their link, their portion of links.
Oh, I see Sedona.
Mr. Mayor, Rudy, you might want to explain several, as many of you'll recall, several years ago, the county, we calculated what the, what the fair share based on the utilization was in, in different portions of the system. And I think most of the partners, you know, paid, but the county said it couldn't afford to pay what we thought was the, was the county's share. And, and they cut it drastically and left it there.
Are we ever gonna revisit that with the county?
We have. They, 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 it doesn't seem like they, they have their own formula, and it doesn't seem to mesh with our formula. We would like to, well, part of, one of the strategic plans that the, that the Council has is to set up the circular through possibly Cornville and VOC. And we visited that already with our, with our county supervisor, and we did, we didn't come to an agreement. Not to say that we can't come to an agreement, but at that point in time, we weren't in agreement. The cost is, is a big issue. We have to have funding. The city can't, can't be taking on that kind of responsibility. It's, it's expensive. They'll need new buses, and. It's, it's expensive, they'll need new buses, and everyone needs to pay their fair share.
I think the county formula excludes buses and drivers.
And gas, and tires, and the whole nine yards.
Doesn't Google drive those things around now? Can't Google do that somehow?
They need to learn their math again.
All right. Again, I can't stress enough that if, you know, when you go through this, I know you, you're busy too, but if you go through it and you have some questions, by all means, email them over to me, we'd be happy to answer them. Get back to you either, email them right back or, or bring them up at tomorrow's meeting or Thursday's meeting. Again, I want to thank Kirsten and Helen for the work that they're doing on it. This, now they go ahead and take care of a lot of the meetings, the department heads, and, and make sure that they get all the balance work done, so I really appreciate their help. And I appreciate you joining us. I think that was a little bit different for us, but I think it was, it was good that we sat down and talked and were able to discuss some of the issues that we had.
Yeah, I enjoyed it too. Sorry, I couldn't be there in person, but.
It worked out just fine. Any questions?
So tomorrow, we're going over outside agencies and.
Well, sorry, with outside agencies, there is, there is a, another, I think it's public safety is on there. Oh, and then I have them right here. Engineering and Public Works and Utility Areas.
Okay.
This tomorrow.
All right. Very good, well, next item is adjournment.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, so Councilmember Alhouse made the motion, Councilmember Henry Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we adjourn. Thank you very much.
Thank you.